太郎がいるだけで癒されるわ ていうか今日はもう帰るの？
Oh, uh yeah, we're going home. And Taru, you're still playing the dog? Yeah, Yuri has to work. Um, I thought this isn't new, but okay. Just occasionally. It's too embarrassing for her to always call me that way. You mean her?
あんたもよくあんなのと付き合えるわね
Well, I-
だけは素直に尊敬するわ
Well, thanks, but um... I like her cute personality so... and shy personality, so haha She isn't annoying. Besides, talking with her is really soothing. It makes me feel comfortable. Uh... Yeah... I did something? Must be your imagination. There's no doubt the reason behind that is that we had sex. But I don't feel like revealing that to Hanako. At all, yeah, no, because if she finds... if she knows about it, she'll be like talking nice talk, barking at me.
今のま、怪しいわね 何か身に覚えがあるんでしょ？
Or rather, not barking at me, maybe meowing at me? Uh, no, I don't. As expected from a newspaper club member, yeah, nosy type. She's really sharp. Well, my mouth is sealed. Even if that was the case, I wouldn't tell you. Not anyone for that matter.
は？なんでよ？
Because it's sensitive. Isn't it obvious? It's a matter of Yuri's and my privacy, yeah. Family members like you have... It are in no place to find. I'm just kidding, right?
とくつまんない男ね
How is that boring? Well, I don't need to be interesting in your eyes. There's no way I could tell the sister of my girlfriend, "We had sex for the first time yesterday." Uh... I think after yesterday's act, yes, she really does love me, so... What do you mean? Eh, eh, I don't think so. She has made the effort to call me Yuri, you know? And even had sex with me, so... Well, I mean, that's the case where she might eventually get bored of sex, but... No, 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 you don't get bored with sex, no? Is that really possible in Yuri's case? However... Well, I'll deal with that should it actually happen. Should the time come that we break up, I suppose that would mean that Yuri fell out of love with me, and that means there wouldn't be true love. But I believe that this is true love. Yeah, whatever, you can pity me all you want. Why is that? Well, I'll prove you wrong. You're saying she isn't serious?
ええ、試しに聞いてみたらいいわ
Yeah, sure. Ask her, like, what? "Do you really love me?" or something?
それより...そうね
Well, I mean, Yuri is the type, yes, who is like... She's still clueless about her, so... Even if I ask her this kind of question, she wouldn't know what to do, but that doesn't mean that she doesn't love me. It's just that she's very, very inexperienced in love, so... You? With me? But why? I mean, there are cases where she did get jealous, so... Yeah, she will definitely react. Trust me on that, Hanako. Trust me. Well... That's true, I suppose. Um... Hanako, please don't be so pessimistic. Come on. Sometimes I don't like your pessimism, seriously. I become somewhat anxious as Hanako states that with brimming confidence. No, 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 you're gonna be wrong. Yuri doesn't really... You're gonna be wrong, so wrong. And what's with Hubei? Why is he suddenly appearing so often daily? Hmm... I have a bad feeling about this. Why is Hubei on even doing here? Hmm? Do you know her?
これは面白くなりそうね
Did you do something about this? Do you have a... Did you play a part in this? Hmm... What's going on? What's going on? We come to Sunday, June the 2nd. Yuri and I are on a Sunday date back at this hill. And just like the last times, we've come to the top of White Lini Hill. Seems it's already about to become a standard date spot. I mean, it's always to come to the same spot, you know? Oh, get Yuri blushing. Is that reason you're gazing at me so fixately? Is that her kiss-me appeal? Without any hesitation, I draw close to Yuri and push my lips onto her. Aw... Why are you calling me "麻生くん" all of a sudden? We are alone, remember? Wasn't that just now your signal that you wanted me to kiss you? Because... I'm your boyfriend, that's why! Sorry. You don't like that, but it seems like this is... I mean, from what we saw earlier, this seems like really a test, you know, for both Yuri and I. Yeah, for both Yuri and Yuma, it's a test. Uh, womanizer. Not really. I'm only doing it with you. I never did it with anyone else. If I did it with someone else, then that's a big problem, I think. That's not really the case, though. Other is the fact that I'm always the one who initiates the kiss. Not even once has it been the other way around. Maybe she's shy or something, I don't know. Don't make me doubt now. I'm pretty sure she's shy, but... Yeah, we have to do something about this. Whenever it turns into that sort of mood, she always conservatively waits for me to approach her. Yuri, can I kiss you one more time?
うい
But I mean, we don't know Yuri's personality. She's the conservative type, the reserved type. She's not the type who like really take the initiative. But if she actually does take the initiative, it will mean that it's true love, right? So I hope that day comes that when she actually takes the initiative to... To have, you know, to kiss Yuma and to have sex with him... Immediately after our lips touch, I can still feel how she tenses up. Until that tension loosens up, I continue to support her body. What do you mean my kisses aren't fair? Why exactly is unfair about that? But instead of asking her that, I kiss her once more. It seems that strength is leaving her legs, so I wrap my hands around her waist and tightly embrace her. Her body is glued so close to me that her breasts get squished.
ユ、ユーマくん
I'm fine, are you? Yuri's gaze suddenly becomes unsettled. The reason is all too clear. To my own disgrace, that little kissing session was already enough to induce a boner. Sorry, that turned me on a bit too much. You don't want me to hold you? Okay, then. Um, I don't think it's wise to do it here, though, but... Just set her down on its own if you leave her alone for a while. Don't mind it. Having assured that her legs are properly supporting her again, I loosen my embrace. Upon that, she once again gazes at me fixately. Seriously, no matter how you look at it, that's definitely a signal that you want me to kiss you again. So might as well just express yourself. Was there a sigh of disappointment because I didn't kiss you? Tele-
顔を見て察するというか... 意識伝神みたいの
Telepathic like? Okay. What I think? Hmm... But you know, Yuri... What I would say to you is, you know, just be yourself. I know you're trying your best to be... But... to like try to read my mind, like try to follow others, but I think... It's also important to be yourself and not to follow other people too much, you know? I've been with them for a very long time after all. Plus, they only infer some things from the current mood. It's not like they entirely understand what I think. In Konami's case, though, sometimes her speech and conduct are really just as if she completely reads my mind. Well, in Konami's case, it's different because she's, uh... Yuma's, you know, younger sister, so they have been living practically with each other every day. Think that will deserve to make things more awkward here, so I should keep that to myself.
場の空気...か
She hung her head as if deeply pondering about it. Gotta say, this girl can get pretty serious about the strangest things. Let's give it a shot, then. Yuri, do you know what I'm thinking about right now? Well, that's common sense, yes? Yeah, correct. You, one way or another, understand these kinds of things without giving that much thought or anything, right? With that, I steal her lips. U-bow! Kuchiwa u-bow! Overfilled with happiness, I almost forgot... I almost forget time whenever I'm with Yuri, which is a good thing, yes. On the way while seeing her home...
え？花がまた何か言ったの？
Yeah, she said something very weird. I don't know why she's so pessimistic, but... Yeah, hardly worth mentioning, though. You should still mention it, you know? We should all be open to each other. I come to her heart and tell Yuri about what Hanako said yesterday. Okay, he did say that. And that's what she said jokingly. I don't know about that. Jokes are really very pessimistic. Which is not a good thing. Yuri shows a quiet reaction in response to that. What if Hanako loved me, hypothetical story? Haha I... Why? Why do you say that, Yuri? Kind of strange to say that. That unexpected statement makes me slightly panic. Saying... Putting aside what Hanako might feel or not, what about your own feelings? Yeah, what do you actually feel about me?
私の気持ち...
What do you mean by that? No, your feelings are important, you know? Does that mean you wouldn't mind if I dated Hanako instead?
ど、だって
Huh? Yuri, why are you saying this sort of thing? Don't you love me? You... You're hurting me with those words. The words cause a sharp pain to run through my chest. Yeah, like... Do you seriously love me? What? Are you serious?
なんでそんなことを聞くの？
Because I thought you would say, like... You would not let Hanako, um... love me. You like, claim me for yourself. Why aren't you doing that? Do you actually love me? Why? I obviously... I wanted to press her to tell me her own inner feelings, but I ultimately disceased from doing it. No, let's stop this talk. There really is no point in discussing what-if scenarios. That's true, but Yuri seems... In response, Yuri turned her face away from me, wearing a somewhat sad, reserved expression. Nope, I still don't believe you, Hanako. I just think... She's not being honest with herself. She still has this... Yuri still has this problem of not being honest with herself. Really, she took a huge first step, confessing her love to Yuma, but still... You're pretty happy to hear that, huh? Hmm... No. I answer brusely and push the hector chief she lent me onto her. I watched it, so here, you can have it back. Um... That will make it seem like I'm in love with you, no? So take it back. And I... I need that hector chief that I gave you back too. That doesn't work for me. Take it already. Why won't you give it back? Do as you want. I'm just following my own principles. Hanako fixedly stares at me. Yeah, actually, the word "fixedly" is not necessary. It's... It's kind of dumb, this word. Yeah, I mean, because I know in Japanese, there's this term called "jitto". So jitto, yeah, mitsume. So mitsume means like glass or stare, and jitto is the fixedly, but... Actually, there's no need for this word, "fixedly". I mean... When you just say "Hanako glass", I mean, it's understood. Right? Yeah. But the next moment... Then she also apologizes to Yuri too. Yes? Huh? What's that all of a sudden? Yeah, that's true. I mean, she really has... She really likes a lot of self-esteem and confidence, Yuri. Yeah. Even though you lose to her in both height and your three sizes... Yuri told me. On the day of the checkup, you yourself kicked up a fart in a loud voice about how you lost a one-and-stuff, remember? Oh yeah, that one, yeah, I remember now. Well, of course, I don't remember the exact numbers, though. Ah, long ago? Just for the record, that was just two months ago. To be precise, one month and a half. Okay, you want to measure again? Well, if you say so, let's just leave it at that. Hanako's always like this. Hanako spouts abusive language and attitude, close to some sort of diliquenger.
でもさ、あんた
Ah, yeah? What?
この際、私に浮気してみない？
What the hell are you talking about, Hanako? Oof... Now, okay, wait, wait. Is Hanako seriously falling in love with me now? Is she... Wow... And this is... At... At... Well... Hubei on say it as a joke, right, but... Somehow, he seems to be kind of influencing this. I don't know, but probably it's not. Uh, but... What is this? What kind of test is this? He seriously... He seriously wanna test me with this? Huh? Is this also some kind of perjoke? Yeah, it's a very perjoke. I swear, this girl... Oh, no! That's right, I won't do something like that. I'm faithful to Yuri no matter what. I slowly pace along the fence while I decisively turn her down. Yeah, yeah. Hanako sets off as she says so complainingly. Matching my pace to hers, I we slowly walk on. Well, yeah. I have to admit, yes, I did actually expect her to say that, but she didn't. But I guess if you think about it on second thought, you know, given her nature... But we really need to work on that, work on her self-esteem. No, not really. Yuma, you're just kind of lying, but yeah.
うん。まあどうでもいいけど
I think Yuri just wants to have your blessing. More than anyone else's. Yours. Her twin sisters, yeah.
は？私に？
Yeah, I mean, she needs some... Self-esteem boost, you know, confidence boost. And not in response to a surprise to Hanako. But that expression gradually changes into one of anger and... Become a couple worthy of your blessing? Like, how? Should I just... Should I just... No, no, we can't tell her that we had sex. Because that will make it seem like we are just having sex for the sake of having sex, yeah. We don't want to give her misunderstanding. But what do you mean by this? Um... You ran away. After spitting that out sharply, she runs off. I, on the other hand, just stood there silently watching her gig. Okay? Alright, we come to June 3rd, Monday. We're getting closer to summer. I think summer starts in July, right? Yeah, but there's still one more month. With Sunday gone by, the Monday of another fresh week has arrived. Oh, I hope it has nothing to do with that girl, you know, who... With that magazine. Yeah, she's the one who caused a bit of trouble.
なんか目ぼしいものってある？
えっと... 安先輩、こんなものが
Um...
うん？どれどれ？
Okay. She takes a letter from Konami and promptly begins to read aloud.
えっと...
Okay. Are you guys a tourist office now? Since it had nothing to do with the PMC, I was just passively listening until now. But the ridiculous content compelled me to cut it. True, true. We need to show, you know, those who are new in this town the ropes. It is. I have to say, the scoop of the student council's work is rather broad. There is. That dating spot.
夜景？
Night view. Yeah, and that's also the promenade as well. Yeah. Yuri was also just passively listening next to me, mutters that quietly as if something had lit her. You had an idea? Most likely, she's thinking of that hill, yeah.
誰か詳しい人いる？
Oh, you know about the hill too, so?
うん、いいですね え？丘ってどこの？
How can you not know, Aunt? In your route, you know about that hill. Actually, I don't think she knows. I mean, effectively, it was Eleonora who brought Aunt to that hill, right, in her route? A weird jinx. How can you call, uh, a couple's jinx, though? You know, that's not jinx. Konami, what the hell are you... Why the hell are you talking about? That wasn't the case in Aunt and your route, Konami? Um... Yuri, please don't believe anything Konami says. Oh, right. I remember that I also once heard about that rumor, seriously? But in answer, it didn't happen. That's the same place where Aunt and Yuma confessed. Uh, and in Konami's route, well, Konami and Yuma didn't go there, but... We did see that place as well in her road with Tina and Hubei on... And Kotaro. But since I wasn't interested in that at that time, it didn't particularly catch my interest.
まあ、よくある類のジンクスっすね
Please don't jinx it now by saying it's a common type jinx. Yes, Aunt, thanks for saying it's made-up nonsense. Please debunk it. Hearing that, I take... I turned to take a look at Yuri. Yuri, please... Please, Yuri. It's not true, it's just a rumor. Well, appears she's totally minded here. What? One more time of what? Cleaning the bath? What, some competition or something? Okay. For some enigmatic reason, Hanako challenged me to towel polishing better. For some reason, uh, but ended up losing by a wide margin. As a result, she started to throw a tantrum. You're no match for me, Hanako. Oh, can I, Hanako? But that means you have to excuse yourself because we just want the two of us to be together. What are you talking about? It's a weekday. In the beginning, if there's no way I could stay over at a girl's dorms, even if I want to... I think that's a good idea, but... Seeing what happened just now, um, Yuri... It's jinx. It's a rumor. Yuri, please. Um... You don't sound convincing there, Hanako. Hanako suddenly lets her eyes wander around unnaturally. She couldn't have acted more suspiciously. But it wasn't a problem in other roads. I mean, at least in Aunt's route, so... Maybe in Aunt's route... Maybe Aunt is a different thing because she's a sore person. Sore person being usually... Usually associated with being negative because, like, from... Yeah, from the depths of hell or something like that, sore person. So they counter that negative effect or something like that. I'm just spouting nonsense, right? Well, the view is nice, yes. Hanako despondently drops her shoulders. I suppose that place is also one of Hanako's favorite places. Not only... Not only ours. Also, Yuri surely didn't say that to admonish her. I also loved the view there. Oh my god, I get a feeling Yuri might get a misunderstanding here because it's like... Um, Yuma said, "Oh, I love that view too", and then Hanako agreeing with him, and then... Yeah? Okay, well, maybe I'm just overthinking things? Well, in this situation... Why is the solution? Yuma has to take the initiative. And why don't you take a picture of the night view there and show us? Um, it doesn't... it won't work that way, Yuma. I know that picture speaks louder than words, but the real thing speaks even... More thousand words than pictures. Yeah, precisely. Oh, actually, I think Yuma did the right thing by asking Hanako to go there by herself. Because that means Yuri and I will be alone. What? Yuri hurriedly detains Hanako, who suddenly got up and was about to dash off. Yep, the 2 of them really are pretty close sisters after all. As I looked at the 2 of them, a smile naturally surfaced on my face. And it's a natural smile. Wait, the days are passing by really quickly. We're now... we're now on June 5th Wednesday. Where does day end? At the supervisor's room of the girls' dorms, where now, so... There I was in the middle of studying together with Yuri and Hanako. Well, Yuri's concerned about you, Hanako. And this is a nice side of Yuri... Hey! Telling Hanako, "Hey, you should study." Yeah, Yuri's still being Yuri. She's the diligent type, and that's why, you know, Yuma loves about her. I mean, why not? Even though it's the girls' dorm? I mean, now gave us... I think maybe now gave... Gave Yuma the permission. That's true, but this is the supervisor's room. As you can see, it's not like I went in... In a girls' room. Yeah. According to my insider, Awisan, this so-called work gathering is basically a drinking party, you know? In Japanese, it's known as "nomikai". Yeah. She says she'll be back before you get stayed and asked me to fend for her while she's out. To begin with, who was it who came here wanting to play cards? Um, pointless league cards, it's not pointless. Yuri then found us some playing cards and immediately suggested we should have a study session together. What should also be mentioned in this regard is that I was first invited to come to their room, but I furiously declined that offer. Hmm, okay? Uh... At first, maybe? Right, she's sleeping? Huh? Before I noticed, Yuri was leaning against my shoulder. Well... She was still awake just a couple moments ago. Maybe she's pretty tired. Can we just let her sleep? I'm fine, I can sleep here with her. Uh, that's not a problem. Besides, she'll probably wake up if I moved her. Uh, yeah? Hanako gazes at Yuri with an expression that suggests mild disbelief. Hmm? Well, it goes to show that she's changing, that's... well, that's a good thing! Because she's changing for my sake, for Yuma's sake. Yeah, that's right. At that time, we were handcuffed together. I remember that she seemed pretty embarrassed. Oh... I think, yeah, I think I remember she... her saying... telling that to Hanako? Oh, no, yeah. She's just a really kind girl, that's what I love about her. Oh, she did have a prejudice against men? She had a prejudice? Uh... What happened exactly? Hanako starts to quietly recite what happened back then while her eyes seem to look somewhere in the distance. Wait, we don't get to know about that? Okay. We're now getting the flashback. At that time, Yuri had already become a hot topic among guys. Oh, because of the modeling? Finally, she was even well-known among upper-class men as a cute freshman girl. And one day... Hmm... This guy's voice sounds very fishy. Like, sounds like... The kind of a bad boy. Yeah. So, she... I think she had a traumatic experience back then because of this guy? Of this guy's? Wait! I thought it's something bad. But wait, is because... They all said she's so cute that she got traumatized because of that? I... well, not really traumatized, but she seems like she doesn't want to... Be... Some... like a... Like an idol of thought, she doesn't want to be that. She seems really, really bothered, and that's why she doesn't trust men. Because she thinks that men are like, oh... You know? Uh, the soft... Race that is always... only thinks about nothing but... Um... lust and the sex and all that. But yeah, that's not true. Yeah, you know, you know, man is always the type who is... I mean, generally, but not always, but it's like... Yeah, they always lust for sex and love, you know, and all that. Yeah. Always into cute stuff, that's moe-moe, that's something cuteness. Yeah. But of course, I'm just generalizing. Okay, so maybe it's also because Hanako said something like this? Okay, are you thinking what I'm thinking? I think these guys probably know to say... Her older twin sisters is something... Yuri did say something bad, I guess. Spitting image. Yeah, I guess this is what pissed off Yuri, maybe? Yeah. I mean... Ah... That's really a bad thing to say. I mean, I guess it's because of... just because of this experience alone. Yeah, but, you know, not every guy's like that, but, you know, this... I mean, first impressions are everything. Well... So it's from this point on that... Yuri really hated guys until she met... Uh, Yuma, that is. Yeah, those... these guys are definitely pangs. Yeah, you don't want to mess around with Yuri, though. Okay, Hanako, you go do your thing. Punch them whatever. Too bad Yuma isn't here, because if Yuma was here, and if I were here, I would punch those 2 the hell out of them. Like, seriously, really. I would, I totally would, okay? I'm not just someone who's... who sits behind the monitor screen and then just talking right here. I would punch the hell out of them! Just from that experience, but... I mean, it's understandable, understandable, because it's so... It's so frustrating, you know, then... Then emotion will take over and that's something, yeah. But even though we do know that, of course, not everyone is like that. Having finished her story, Hanako hit her heavy sigh. So that's why she said, "Love is stupid." Ha, no, I don't think that's really the case. She actually said "love is stupid" because of all those people who quit... Uh... Quit the PMC, right in the beginning, yeah? Although that could also have been a fewer... Though that reason why she said "love is stupid", so... Yeah, back in the beginning of this vision order, that would be like 2 months ago. Yeah, a couple weeks before we started dating. Back then, I thought that notion originated from the fact that PMC and student council members quit due to romantic affairs, but... Because it was deeper rooted than that. Yeah, I think that... that has a... You have a point there, Yuma? So now will you give us your blessing? Will you, Hanako? Well, as a boyfriend, that much is natural. Let her sleep, come on. I can also sleep here. As if to say that this conversation is now over, Hanako snars that it's still sleeping Yuri. Okay, maybe, just to sidetrack a bit, I think... I mean, looking at this room, of course, reminds me of now, right? So I think now permanently stays here? Because I don't think now has a house right now, right? So, she's not... not necessarily permanently, but temporarily stay here? You know, as the supervisor of the dorms? Because she also works as the dorm supervisor, right? So temporarily stays here. So probably her real home, we don't know where, probably will be real in this vision order. But yeah, this is where she usually stays. Okay? About your past? About the fact that you used to hate men? Nope, it just means that she know... he gets to know better about you, Yuri. Oh my god, Hanako, why do you keep making this sort of jokes? Well, we eventually share it. Last ultimate test? Okay. I'm so looking forward to it, I guess... Wow, Hanako. She really had to put it this way? Come on now, how test is this? Wow, oh wow.